We are now live.
We are now live. I will welcome everyone to the July 8th Lampton County Council meeting. And we will start off, I guess, with a silent reflection. Thank you. Stephan, a brief rise and report?
Yes, thank you, Warden Weaver. County Council met for a period of about 37 minutes in camera today to discuss ongoing negotiations and draft agreements with Seasons Retirement Communities for a long-term lease at the current Bayside Centre. Staff were provided instructions in that regard, and those instructions will be communicated to Seasons Retirement, the landlord, and there will be a press release issued later this morning in regards to instructions that were provided by County Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Rennerday, I see you're on the line, and we would like an update, and welcome. Good morning, Doctor.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I have a turnabout.
Okay. How about that?
Very good, thank you.
Okay? Okay. Great. Okay, thank you, Warden. Good morning, everyone. I have a brief update and some comments, I suppose, for you today. So, the update is that, you know, in the last few weeks, we've been doing quite well in Lampton County. So, in the last 24 hours, for example, we haven't had any more cases. Many more of the cases that we've had are resolving, so they're kind of catching up to the ones that were announced or diagnosed previously. We don't have any active institutional outbreaks, and I guess I would say that the picture is fairly consistent across our region as well. So, things are settling down in large parts of this region, and that's very reassuring. I think there's always this ongoing question about what's going to happen in terms of moving to stage three, what are the criteria for that? I'm not, I don't, I'm not, I've not been made aware of what those criteria are, but they're probably similar to what happened for stage two in terms of numbers of cases and PPE supply, hospital search capacity, et cetera. That would be my guess, but I don't know. And I guess the other piece is that, in terms of the comments, so you'll be aware that lots and lots of discussion is happening around masks everywhere. People are taking, well, I suppose there are three different approaches to it. The first is, in the very early phases, some medical officers of health issued a Section 22 order under the Health Protection and Promotion Act related to mask use in certain settings. Other municipalities or groups have followed up with bylaws instead of the Section 22 approach. And in fact, when I've polled some of the medical officers of health who did do Section 22 approach, you know, earlier, they've also been fairly supportive of the bylaw approach as an intervention, if that's what you want to do to address this, to address the issue. I've issued some guidance to you folks in terms of two things. One is an analysis of whether or not the Health Protection and Promotion Act is the right way to go in terms of the interventions related to mask use, and I don't believe that it is at this time, and so you'll have seen that analysis. The secondary side, though, is that recognizing, of course, municipalities, like everyone else, are under a lot of, you know, pressure in terms of what everyone else is doing and what's going on, and so that, you know, if there are municipalities or if the county as a group is considering implementing a bylaw related to masks, I've also issued some guidance related to that, you know, those considerations, things you should keep in mind. And so, those two things you have, as well as a letter from me describing those two things, I think this is an ongoing kind of discussion. I think that it's happening everywhere, some places are doing it, some places aren't. It's important to know that there are some examples of jurisdictions that have successfully handled COVID-19 without necessarily having mandatory mask policies in place, and so that's another consideration. But of course, there's going to be back and forth on this issue as people's opinions change, as the science shifts, all of that kind of thing. One, just in preface to whatever discussion you're going to have, I would also say that one of the most interesting and reasonable threads that I read about this was from an infectious disease specialist in Toronto, who sort of said, you know, keep this mask bylaw thing or the mandating of it in the toolkit, but now may not be the right time to use it, given what's happening in terms of cases. And so, rather build education and awareness, enable people to use them in the right circumstances and settings, and then if you need to at a later date, if there is a bigger wave or if that sort of happens, then you have that to go to. So, that's another consideration as well, and I think probably I'll close my update there.
Okay. Thank you for that. Questions for Dr. Rennerday? Come for start.
Yes, Doctor, this does have, this question does have to do with the use of masks, and you're right, there are several people that are commenting both sides of the discussion. We currently are experiencing a 2.2% positivity rate, which I think is phenomenally successful and a tribute to the people of Lampton County in terms of diligence, in terms of handwashing, social distancing, and wearing masks. That being the case, if we were to see a dramatic rise in the 2.2% positivity rate, would that lead you to change your mind as it relates to the use of masks indoors?
Good question, councillor. I think you have to be very cautious about how you interpret the positivity rate. The positivity rate is the percent of all of the people who are tested that come back positive. And in large part, a lot of those positive, sorry, in large part, that number has been driven downwards by many, 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 many people getting tested who have a very, very low likelihood of having disease. So, I guess I would say I would not be looking at the percent positivity at all. What I would be looking for was evidence of transmission in community settings beyond close contacts despite having a bunch of other measures in place. So, that would really be my threshold. It would be sort of, you know, when we went back through the cases that we've had to date, right, by far, the greatest risk is household contacts and close contacts, people that you spend a lot of time with, in places where actually mask bylaws would not have any impact, right? So, we're talking about gatherings, we're talking about anniversaries, wedding parties, et cetera, things like that. And so, what I would be looking for to move to that next level and say that this is important is to say, are we seeing a lot of transmission outside of what we usually see, which is household contacts, close contacts, and institutional outbreaks?
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Bird.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Good morning, Dr. Rennerday. Obviously, as councillors, we're getting many, many emails from people on both sides of the mask issue. But last night and this morning, I have had quite an influx of messages with regarding not wearing them due to people having health concerns, whether it be claustrophobia, being asthmatic, any kind of heart conditions where they just pass out if they put something covering their airways. And so, the collection of these emails I've received, they feel that the voice of those opposed to the mandatory use of the mask is not being well enough represented. That's the first part, and they're saying that really, through this first period of uncertainty, we've created an environment that we've managed to be successful through social distancing, with washing our hands, really taking extra care with all our health aspects, but they feel that wearing masks would be creating an environment of fear, which is not how they should be moving forward in Lampton County, especially business owners. They want people to feel welcome when they come into the businesses, and as long as people respect the distancing, should that not work?
Yeah, thank you for your question. Uh-oh. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you for your question. Yeah, I think that those are very valid points. I mean, I think that the two of the things that you have brought up certainly are implementation challenges that I've been hearing from other jurisdictions, one especially related to the idea that, you know, should people be expected to prove to other people that they cannot wear a mask, and what constitutes the judgment about whether or not that's valid or, right? And so, there's that whole element of you might have an invisible medical condition which makes it perfectly legitimate for you to not wear a mask, and you can still protect other people by staying away from them to the extent that you can and minimizing contact, right? So, that's one implementation challenge, and I think that's very, that's important, and I've heard that as well, right, that we need to think about those folks if there were to be some kind of bylaw rule about mandatory masking. The other piece around fear, I think, is really reasonable too, right? There's this moralistic bent on mask use now, that it's sort of like this suggestion that if you don't wear a mask, you're somehow not a good person or not interested in protecting other people, and I don't think either of those things is necessarily true. And then the final thing, I think, that you said also, is the idea about business owners, how would they implement this? And this is another big question that's coming up from the places that have started doing this. I mean, many of the frequently asked questions around this that municipalities are posting say, you know, do we expect business owners to actively enforce this policy or the mandate? And I think, you know, the answer is, well, we expect them to educate, we expect them to use the best, you know, to have that as an opportunity for education of their customers, and I'm not sure that that's necessarily their role, especially if they're trying to carry on with their business, right? So, I think that you've pointed to a lot of very valid questions about how this would be implemented, so.
And just one further comment, there was something on Facebook this morning, and you always get these snippets, of course, before a meeting, but say if two people are walking down the street at the same time, they don't necessarily know each other, one's wearing a mask and one isn't, the one wearing the mask is annoyed with the person not wearing the mask, but the person not wearing the mask replies, "What are you worried about if you're wearing a mask? Doesn't it work properly?" So, what are they worried about if people aren't wearing masks, as long as they maintain the distancing? So, I guess that's the question that comes up all the time, too.
Sure. I mean, if I can just comment on that, I think it's important to remember that the use of non-medical masks, okay, is really primarily to protect other people from the secretions of the person who is wearing the mask. And so, I think that it drives this idea that everybody should be wearing a mask to protect everybody else from those people's secretions, and it's premised on the idea that there must be a lot of asymptomatic disease and a lot of asymptomatic transmission. Those things are not necessarily worked out, but they're not consistent with what we've seen here. So, yeah, I think that's another important consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bradley?
Yeah, I have a different point of view, a very different point of view. And I'm not basing it on my skill set or knowledge, because I don't have that as it relates to public health. But the reality is, across this province, Dr. Rennerday's colleagues have come together, and it's not even a close debate, city of Toronto, city of Ottawa, four medical officers of health there came together, city of Windsor, and there's numerous other examples, London, to say that it's the best thing to do. And what's being overlooked in the discussion today, it's not about today, it's not about what's going on today. Yes, there's been a decline, and let's not forget, we've lost 25 lives in Sarnia, Lampton, and we were reactive at the beginning of this, and I don't want to see us reactive again, because the big thing that's coming, we're in stage two, and that's where this low, and keep in mind, stage one and two, people were confined, people were self-isolated. So, that had an impact as we moved forward, and a good impact. When we hit stage three, which now looks like end of the month, early August, almost everything in the province is going to, everything in our city is going to open up, in our county, and that is by its own nature going to bring a lot of exposures. So, do we want to come back in August and pass through the county an emergency order to mask, or do we want to be proactive today and move in that direction, just like, I would say, probably 75% of the population of this province has now moved to masking? And even there's a survey out today that, or yesterday, one of four Canadians may never wear a mask, but making it mandatory finds little resistance from them, that excepted that's part. And yes, enforcement, you can always find reasons not to do something, but like most of our bylaws, the mayors know, they're self-enforcing, but it's only that 20% you may have difficulties. I just think we should be, we're looking like the odd personnel right across this province, and I don't think that's a good thing in this particular situation. There are times that it is, but I think in this case, we're finding every excuse not to take the steps to lead. I mean, you had the World Health Organization yesterday say, "We're not even near the peak, we're heading there around the world." And so, if we don't take proactive actions now, I think we're going to regret it in August, September, when those numbers start to climb substantially, when we have great exposure throughout our communities. So, that's my point today, and if I need to bring a motion at the end, I certainly will.
Councillor Rudd?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Warden Weaver. I think this is not a county issue, this is the ability to put a bylaw in place is available for any of the lower-tier municipalities that want to do that. We have done an excellent job out here in rural Donutemia, our businesses have did an excellent job of having things set up, so that you go into the store, you don't need the mask, they're doing a great job. Our local businesses are doing fabulous. If lower tiers think they need to do it, move forward with it and put the mask into place. I happen to live with somebody that cannot wear a mask, and by all means, it's not fair to them either to have to go into the store, and even though they don't have to, try to explain why they don't need to wear a mask or why they can't wear a mask. And I just think we need to deal this on our own as individual municipalities, it shouldn't be a county bylaw, it should be an individual municipality, and let each one do their own thing, learn how, understand how you're going to try to enforce it exactly to Dr. Rennerday's point. That's the next thing, we can put a bylaw in place, but how do you enforce it? I think it should scale to county hands, it should be back to the individual municipalities to look after on their own.
Like you got, thank you.
Anyone who was next, Mayor Hand?
Earlier, I was going to say, I've been in a couple of stores in Sarnia that have a mask policy in place, so that option is already available for those business owners who want to execute it. One was in downtown Sarnia, one was else, like on London Road, but you were not allowed in the store without a mask. I had my own mask available, but they had masks at the door, so wear the mask or not. I mean, I'm sure that you would be able to say, "I can't," I don't, I didn't get into that discussion, but I'd just say that there are places that small business owners that have already implemented on their own. So, that option is available to an individual business.
Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Warden. I concur with Councillor Broad. I think toughy individual municipalities, whether they want to make a motion or not. As you know, on Lampton shores, we get on our weekends, 6,000-plus people coming to our beaches. I don't really know how our bylaw people are going to stand there and write tickets for 6,000 people if they don't come and wear a mask on the beach. It's, it would be just next to impossible. And our businesses, they try to respect the distances as they can, they put up warning signs, it's up to every individual, and they're coming here to show respect and obey the rules. So, I think, you know, if the ones that are going to be the naysayers or don't want to follow the rules, you're going to have those problems anyway. I agree with Councillor Bradley, 20% are going to be your problem, probably, but I think if 80% of the people or 90% of the people are going to come and show respect, that's where your bylaw is going to have to take effect. And I think every individual municipality has to decide on their own what they want to do with their own.
Thank you, Councillor Arnold.
Thank you very much, Warden. We started talking about masks in March, and many of us were in favor of encouraging people to wear masks, and that still goes on in St. Clair Township. Whenever I send out a note, that's the basic thing at the end, even though the WHO does not recommend wearing a mask, we've been, you know, recommending to folks to go ahead and wear a mask if they feel more comfortable, that sort of thing. And I agree with Councillor Broad, but each individual municipality can do that. I know, I appreciate the senior citizens' time for me to go shopping, because all I need is groceries. So, if I go out and get groceries at 7:00 AM, there's only about 10 of us old bogies walking around the store, so it's not really too much of a problem to stay socially distancing away from people. And I understand that young people, young families, they don't have those same options as old guys like me do, but we've always encouraged folks to wear a mask, but I hate telling people what to do. They should be responsible enough that if they feel they need it, that they should go ahead and do it. And the other thing, if we legislate it at the county level or even at the municipal level, somebody's going to have to tell everybody where they can get them, because I know there are places that sell them, and I get inundated on email quite often from people that are trying to get me to buy a thousand at a time. But for the general population in my municipality, tell somebody from Beecher where they can go and get a mask so they can go pick up their groceries that they go to do every two weeks. You know, like, it's very difficult unless we can find a place that we have a central supply or the businesses are going to have them, such as Councillor Handset and the businesses she's been at, that they have them at the door. It's not an easy thing. And when this all started, we really pushed the N95 mask, but then we were taking away from people that really need them in the healthcare sector, which is exactly what the WHO says not to do. So, you know, and then they come out with the surgical masks that are lightweight and that to protect others from you, but I still think that we should continue to have our, encourage people to wear them if they're comfortable, but I'd hate to tell people what to do on something as trivial as a mask to put on your face. And when I think of masks, I've seen people in store, I thought they were going to hold it up, because they had a kerchief wrapped around from their nose down, just like they do in all the old westerns, and, you know, that, in one sense, is kind of scary, because I live close enough to Detroit, I watch a lot of Detroit news, and a lot of those guys, that's the way they hold places up still. A lot of them don't bother anymore, but they still do. So, you know, like, that, there's another inundated fear of a homemade mask that's just a kerchief wrapped around, and I am not a seamstress, so I can't make my own homemade mask, but in something that's comfortable, and I worked in the heavy industry for 35 years, and we wore them quite often. But you wore a full face so that your eyes were protected. If you were trying to protect yourself, you wanted to make sure your eye ducts were protected, because if they weren't, that mask from your nose down is only half the job that's going to protect you or anyone else. But anyways, that's just my two cents. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Councillor Rumbout?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I have done an about-face on this issue. When we first started talking about it, I thought, let's just cover everybody up and get back to normal life and get back to doing what we need to do as far as the economy is concerned. Since that time, I've talked to a couple of doctors, and both of their opinions were that masks don't work in containing this virus, and I applaud Dr. Rennerday for sticking by his word from the beginning and not giving in to the political pressure. I think a lot of the other health units have done that, have given in to political pressure and pressure from the community to put this in place, and I'm very strong on allowing people to do what they feel is best for themselves and for their families.
Thank you. Dr. Rennerday, have a comment?
Yeah, thank you for that. I just wanted to be clear on one thing. I mean, I appreciate that it sounds like I'm hearing that the council values that I've taken the same stand, but I really do want to tell you, I mean, if the evidence changes or if the circumstance changes or if there are other factors that influence the decision, I mean, I may change my mind at some point, but I will show you the work. I will tell you what it was that made me change my mind, I will tell you what the analysis was that helped support that, okay? So, I just, so please don't think that, like, I might take the same stand forever on this issue through the however many years we're going to go through this, but for now, this is where I stand.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussions? Councillor Bradley?
Councillor, sorry, Warden Weaver, I'd like something on the record. County Council, and it's pretty obvious from the comments, doesn't want the county to be the lead on the masking issue, but I think County Council should pass a motion saying that, so that ends that discussion. And as to the individual municipalities, that's the last thing, that's why as a group of mayors across the province, we oppose regionalization. So, say Sarnia did it, or it never does it, you know, the whole mix there. It just creates more confusion, and that's why Toronto, the GTA, went in the direction, that's why Ottawa went in a mask direction. So, I'm looking for some guidance, because I think County Council needs to say, and I don't want to move that motion, or I'll move a motion and see where it goes, that County Council supports the masking policy as we move forward on the COVID into stage three. See if I can get a second there.
Councillor Wade has seconded that.
I need some clarification. Are you including the word mandatory on inside building use?
That is exactly the direction, the same direction of Toronto, Ottawa, and I have the information of Toronto. This is more of a broad principle. This is to say that Lampton County Council, as we move forward and we move into stage three, will look at a mandatory masking policy.
Indoor, count.
Well, that's where, Councillor Stark, with all respect, that's the only place any of the bylaws passed have been. They're specific to when you can't socially distance, because you can outside, you can on patios, you can do it in all sorts of places, when you can't socially distance, that's what the other cities have done, they have made it mandatory in those type of situations.
Included in that is restaurants when we get into interior seating. How are we going to handle that?
The same way Toronto, Ottawa, and all the other cities do. There's exemptions in there in certain situations. They've done comprehensive work on this, and I've got all the bylaws here from Toronto legally researched, and again, I'm looking for a broad principle statement here, and if the County Council doesn't want to move in that direction, then say that, and then the local communities can figure out what they're going to do.
Councillor Lappert?
Yes, would that include our office here, like, our office staff would have to wear a mask constantly, even though they have the distances and are able to do that?
Councillor, Mayor Lappert, it only applies when people can't socially distance. When people can't do those things, anyhow, that's a judgment call, I know that's a tough one, I know enforcement's a tough one, but I don't want to be the doom and gloom guy on this call, but I'm going to be. The last 110, 11 days would be very difficult for all of us. I think the real storm's coming, the real storm's coming, especially with the stage three. I mean, the province, whether I agree with it or not, yesterday are looking for one year, and Dr. Rennerday alluded to it, he's talking years now, he's not talking months, and the province is the same way. So, I just think we should be proactive, and I think honestly, lives will be saved if we are proactive instead of reactive.
Okay. Any other comments?
And can we have the vote recorded, too, Mr. Warden? For the record, I think that's.
Stephan is there, can you read back the motion?
Well, I was going to ask for clarification, because I think it's changed over, over time here, so if I understand it correctly, it's just a pronouncement that County Council encourages individuals to, of their own accord, wear face masks covering their nose, mouth, and chin whenever indoor public facilities. Do I understand that? Is that what we're reading?
That's not, I mean, that's part of it, but what it really is, is the county will take the lead with the medical officer of health on a mandatory masking policy as we head into stage three, as we hit stage three.
And when you say policy, I'm assuming that policy and or bylaw, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Hand, then Councillor Rumbout, before we, Councillor Hand?
I'm confused, sorry, but is this saying that we're not doing this now, but as we go to the next stage, the county would implement mandatory masking? Is that what this says?
Okay.
It's part of stage three? I'm just confused.
There shouldn't be any confusion, Mayor Hand. I'm saying, I'm accepting some of the arguments today, and I'm listening to that, but I'm saying as we move to stage three, when we go from, you know, fairly narrow, difficult rules to a broad based Ontario, just totally wide open, every workplace with a few exceptions will be wide open, and you'll always have, and I know in Toronto and other places, they feel it's not effective, they can always withdraw, and I'm reading the room, I know there's not a lot of support for it, but I'm thinking we'll regret if we don't have something in place, because even as a group, we're not meeting again until, what's it, early September, and yet we're probably heading to stage two at the end of this month or very, very early August.
Okay, Councillor Rumbout?
I wonder what if someone refuses and is, what is the consequences that you're willing to mandate on this mandatory?
Sorry, Mayor, I'm not mandating anything, I'm just asking us the follow-up examples of Ottawa and all the other places I've mentioned, who have devised ways of dealing with this. No one, and including here, we have not taken a heavy-handed approach. We've had five charges, I think, out of 1,000. We've had five charges, I think, out of a thousand complaints. And that is the same here. If someone can't do it for the right reasons or, you know, it's, there's always reasons not to do something. In this case, we're just, we're behind the lead of many, many communities across this province.
Counselor Broad?
Thanks, Warden Weaver. So I'm hearing in the motion, we're talking about mandating face masks and we're talking about our medical officer of health who has clearly indicated that that's not required. So I'm really confused on the motion that where it sounds like we're forcing the medical officer of health to have mandatory policy. And that isn't what he's just said to us, that he hasn't said that all along. So I'm really confused. It seems like we're putting words into his mouth. He's made it very clear. He's given us a good direction. He sent out that information the other day on what to do and he's not clearly saying that. So there's no way, I guess the motion can go true. If this motion is defeated, I will be making a motion that all member municipalities of the county will be looking for them to look after their own mandatory policy on Facebook if this motion fails. That will give the clear direction to the public.
And Counselor Broad, that's exactly what I'm trying to get, is if county doesn't want to do it, I know what's gonna happen on my motion. And then if you bring your motion, at least it's on the record and we've ended that debate here. So that's what the point of this is.
Okay. Is everyone clear about the motion? Been asked for a recorded vote, so I will call on.
Can I just move an amendment if I could? And that is to replace the word mandatory with the word encourage.
That's contrary to the motion.
No, it isn't. It's complimentary to the motion.
There's a big difference, Counselor Stark, with all respect. Motion's very specific on mandatory as they've done in other cities. Otherwise, it's just the same thing that's being said over and over again about you should, you should wear a mask if you were. So I see it totally contrary to the motion.
I'd ask the chair to rule on the appropriateness of the amendment.
I could step in, Warden Weaver, if you wish, to provide advice. So in accordance with our rules, it is, the suggested amendment would be contrary to the current motion on the table. And if it's not accepted by the mover and seconder, it's not amendable.
Okay, I concur with that. The motion is asking for mandatory. Counselor Cook?
Can we just have the motion reread again, just so we're all clear where we're going? Because I'm not comfortable with the medical officer being included in the motion myself.
I can certainly do that. The motion is for the county to take the lead on the development and enforcement of a policy and or bylaw on requiring the wearing of masks in indoor public establishments as the county enters stage three. So the practical effect of that motion is that if it succeeds, it moves forward, you will see yourself in a situation much like Toronto, Ottawa, where a bylaw was enacted to require mandatorily the wearing of face masks in indoor public establishments.
Okay. Everyone clear? I would ask Mr. Tufel to call the vote.
A recorded vote was asked by Counselor Bradley and we are starting with Counselor Hand.
Your microphone is muted, Counselor Hand, but I believe you said no?
I said no. I'd prefer to deal with it at my local level.
Thank you. Counselor Musley?
Opposed.
Thank you. Deputy Warden Marriott?
Opposed.
Thank you. Counselor Miller?
Opposed.
Thank you. Counselor Napper?
In favor.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
In favor.
Counselor Rombouts?
Opposed.
Counselor Stark?
Opposed.
Counselor Veen?
No.
Counselor White? That is in favor for the motion? I don't want to hear any sort of disagreement as to who's voting how. Counselor Arnold?
No.
Counselor Byrd? That is a no. Counselor Bushy? Counselor Bushy, you're on mute. Can you repeat that, please?
Was okay not for long ago.
You're good now. So yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. You're for the motion. Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Broad?
No.
Counselor Cook?
No.
Counselor Ferguson?
No.
Warden Weaver?
No.
The motion fails.
Okay. Counselor Bradley?
Yeah, just procedure because we've got ourselves in some situations. I think it'd be a lot better, Mr. Warden, if we had to say yes or no on each issue. Because, you know, some of us were saying opposed, in favor. And I think it'd be easier for you and for Stefan if we could just say yes or no, and I speak from experience.
It would be a thumbs up or a thumbs down would work for two.
Just how you do it. You gotta be careful.
Yes. Counselor Hand? Remind mute.
Suggestion, I was liking the motion of going on record about suggesting masks that Counselor Stark was putting forward as a principle. Without the word mandatory.
I.
Are you moving that as a motion? Because I'll second that.
Yes.
Okay, it's move the.
The same motion, just with the word mandatory replaced by suggest or encourage.
Or support the use of masks in enclosed areas?
Yes.
It's what our medical officer of health has been saying all the way along. It takes the political side out of it and supports our medical officer of health. Counselor Broad, a comment?
Yes, I just wondered if the mover and the seconder would put in there that at any mandatory enforce or any mandatory policy will be done up by the lower tier municipalities. Clarification that if it's gonna come, you know, something's gonna come to the people, it will come from the lower tier. I just wondered if they could include that in their, in their motion somehow. Thank you.
That's agreeable with me.
Yeah.
So that they the motion my interpretation of it is the motion reads that the county council encourages the use of masks where social distancing is not available. Where social distancing cannot be achieved and any mandatory mask bylaws be go through the lower tier system. Counselor Rombouts, then Counselor Byrd?
Just a question, Dr. Renaday, do you support that? Just for clarification, do you support that? Do you think it will help?
Yes, I mean, I think in terms of being consistent with what we know, then it's a good idea to encourage or support people to wear masks in places where they cannot physically distance that are indoor and potentially crowded or poorly ventilated. I think that those are reasonable things to say to people. You know, we can, I think we'll have to have some further discussions maybe at a future meeting about, you know, the kind of dimensions of transmission and what are the biggest risks? Because I think that influences this a lot. And so I think if you're saying support, encourage, those kinds of things, they're very reasonable to say. And efforts can be made to, to support education around that and all of that kind of thing.
Counselor Byrd?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Just to sort through all this, if this motion were to pass or any motion worded similarly, how do we protect the rights of the people who cannot for medical reasons wear these masks? Because if you pass this motion and police it, is everybody not wearing a mask for health reasons going to be attacked verbally? Maybe Dr. Renaday can give a response to that one, please?
I might not be the best person to respond to the question, but I think my understanding would be that this motion would be around supporting and encouraging, which would not then go towards enforcement or requiring people to say why they're not using masks in any way.
Yeah, thank you. I just think it's a gray line because, you know, not everybody knows why other people are not wearing them and it's just automatic. People are gonna do that. Why aren't you wearing your mask, you know? And then people then feel bad who can't wear a mask. So I'm just thinking, it gets into a really gray area there. Just my thoughts.
Counselor Hand?
That continues to be part of the education, which we, you know, I've already seen it, that there are some situations where people cannot wear masks. So you just have to keep educating people that just because they don't have a mask on, doesn't mean they don't care. Maybe they can't, but it's up to the individual.
Could I ask for a recorded vote as well, please?
Okay. Counselor Bradley?
Yeah, and I'm gonna ask the question to be split. I mean, the masking thing has been in the public education from the primary control group, from the health unit from day one almost. And to me, they're two different questions. To me, the real issue is the taking away from a regional approach, which is what public health is. Public health is a regional body. And trying to then isolate in this side. I can't support it when we're gonna say, let's just put it back to the lower tier when everything else has been approached on a regional basis. So I think you split the question and, you know, it really is motherhood on the masking thing because it's been said and said, it's been said here. That if people wish to do it, they can. That just means nothing. So I, I mean, I'm gonna ask, can you split the question? Or if not, then I'll be voting against the motion only because we've been telling everyone that they can wear masks for months now.
Counselor Rombouts, then Counselor Hand?
It's my understanding that if you're in an enclosed space with a big, large group of people and everybody has a mask on and one person has COVID, it could still pass from that one person to the rest of the group regardless of whether they were wearing a mask or not. Is that true, Dr. Renaday? And if it is, why would it be recommended for us to wear masks in an indoor space? Assuming that the person who has COVID has a mask on and they're coughing and sneezing and they're in a crowded space with a bunch of people and they're coughing and sneezing, will the virus be stopped by that mask enough to protect the people around them?
Ah, okay. Okay, so with the understanding that nothing is 100% on this, right? If a person is sick and coughing, first of all, my recommendation to them would be they should not be in that setting. Period. Okay?
Agreed.
Okay, so let's, so knowing that, I would say that's the biggest thing is when you're talking about these closed settings is to say if you're actively ill, actively symptomatic, you should just not be there. Please stay at home and recover, right? Now, now we're talking about people who might be mildly symptomatic or might not, not know that they have disease. They may have been incubating it and that sort of thing. And if you are wearing a mask, what, what we understand is that that mask, depending upon how it's constructed and how effective it is, may be able to stop the transmission of some of those droplets out of your mouth, onto other people or onto surfaces, right? It's not 100%, but I think it's one of those things that says it's an additional precaution in term, you know, over and above these other things. But if I had to rank them in order of importance, I would say keep that sick person out of that setting and, and keep people socially distanced from each other whenever you can.
Thank you. I just am not convinced that it would protect the people around them and it would give people a false security. And encourage them to stand closer to each other and speak closer to each other. That's just my opinion.
Okay, any other questions? It's been, Counselor Hand?
I, I would like to take, I agree with Mayor Bradley. I'd like to take the piece out about what individual communities can do. This is just about encouraging mask wearing. Everybody can deal with the mask issue at their own municipality. It doesn't have to be included in part of this statement. It's a different issue. It's a separate. I don't know how Counselor Stark feels, but I'm fine with taking those words out.
Yeah, I think it'll, I think it'll make it easier to get the county on the record as what we support. That's important.
Yeah.
Counselor Veen?
Okay, can we read the motion back before we vote?
That's a good one. And I've taken notes based on the discussion on this very topic. So it's a one singular issue motion and it would go as follows. County council supports and encourages those who are capable of doing so to wear face masks covering nose, mouth and chin in indoor public facilities when physical social distancing is not possible. That addresses everybody's issue about, you know, blanket statement to anybody who may not be able to do so.
Yep, that's agreeable.
Yep.
Mover and seconder is agreed with that wording?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments before I call the vote?
I believe there was a recorded vote sought by Counselor Bradley. Are we still looking at a recorded vote on this one?
Counselor Stark, I believe, asked for this recorded vote. Is that correct?
Correct. I want to get this on the record.
Okay. We are starting with Counselor Cook and if you're in favor of the motion, please say yes. If you're not in favor of the motion, please say no.
Yes.
Thank you much. Counsel Ferguson?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hand?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Musley?
Yes.
Thank you. Deputy Warden Marriott?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Napper?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Rombouts?
No.
Counselor Stark?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Veen?
No.
Thank you. Counselor White? Thank you. I'm mute, Counselor White?
Yes.
Thank you. That's a yes. Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Byrd? Thank you. Counselor Bushy?
No.
Thank you. Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Broad?
Yes.
Thank you. And Warden Weaver?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Renaday. I believe that's our update. It was a, quite a discussion and all right, we'll move along and I'll let you get on with your day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are at item eight of our agenda, which is the minutes of our open session of county council on June the third. Do I have a mover and a seconder for those minutes? Counselor Miller, seconded by W. Warden Marriott. Any question on June third minutes? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Correspondents, item number nine, to receive and file a letter from Steve Clark, a letter from Carol Warder of Gray County. Counselor Broad, you move those items A, B, C and D for, to be received?
I would like to support nine B and D and receive and file A and C. And I don't know whether you want to move B into there or not, the A? Because I would support that one at the same time. Or if you want, we can just deal with the items under nine A. Kind of guess whatever.
Let's, let's do nine A to start with.
Okay, so I would support nine B and D and receive and file nine A and C.
Okay. Seconder for that? Counselor Cook? Any questions regarding that? Seeing no questions, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Item B, correspondence from municipalities. This is a request for the guaranteed annual income. Counselor White?
Yes, I'd move to support this.
Move to support that? Counselor Bradley and then Counselor Napper. Seconder? Counselor Bradley, you're seconding that. Counselor Napper, questions?
No, I was trying to second it, but I guess I'm in a dark seat.
Very well done. Any questions or comments? Counselor Bradley?
I appreciate the opportunity. I brought this to County Council three or four years ago at the provincial level. It's simply asking, because I'm receiving word that they may be considering this. It's not obligating us. It's not costing us anything. And I think we're an ideal size, 130,000 people, real good cross-section of population. And just to conclude, because there's so much misunderstandings about this, is that what you're really doing is giving people a livable income, particularly people on disabilities who are $1,200 a month, instead of giving people on CERB are $2,000 a month. But it was funny, the last time this came, people on the right and left supported it, because on the right, it would reduce the bureaucracy big time, and make it very simple, just the way things are being handled now with direct payments to people. But the key on this is that there is clawbacks. It's manageable, but no one's ever got it to the point where it's being tested. And if this, say there's a pilot project or a couple, and it fails, I'll be the first to put my hand up. But no one in this country's ever got to the point where we can really test it on a small scale and see if it works or not. And if it doesn't work, fine. If it works, from my point of view, great. But let's just find out. So that's all this is about, is setting the stage for what I think the federal government may do in the next budget.
Counselor Roboats?
There was tests on this program back in the 70s. There was three states and one province in Canada that tried it, and it didn't continue. So how is that different from what you're asking today?
Well, it's a lot different. The project in Manitoba was started by one government and ended by another government. In Ontario, the three pilot projects which we applied for were started by one government and then ended by the other government before they got up and running. So there's never been in Canada a true, to the end, completion of a project. And the one in Dauphin, Manitoba, that's exactly what happened in the 70s. And then again, Ford promised to do the three pilot projects in the election, and then he changed his mind, which is his right. I just think we need, and again, we're just asking to be considered if this moves forward. That's a big if. And I mean, again, we were willing to do it four years ago. I think we should just put our name up there and be ready to go if it happens again.
Counselor Napper?
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Wasn't it proven somewhere? Hugh Siegel, he was quite a promoter of this. And I think it was really proven that it does work. And I think it was, was it in the United States or Australia or someplace? And it has been proven, and it does work. And I don't think they have to reinvent the wheel on this. I think it's a great thing, and I'm going to be supportive.
Counsel Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Just a small point. We should include Leon Rood, the MP, for the rest of Lantin Middlesex, please.
My apologies, we missed that. Sorry, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? The motion is there to support this. All in favor of that? Foes? That is carried. Item number 10, information reports. A report there regarding gypsy moths, and a report, opening of stage two museums, galleries, and archives. Moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Counselor Lucely, to receive those reports for information. Questions? Counselor Cook? You're on mute.
Thank you, Warden. I just want to thank our general manager for the report on the gypsy moth. They are very invasive out in our neck of the woods, and obviously through Clinton, Wyoming also. I just need to know, timing-wise, it looks like it's going to be in the fall. Will that be sufficient time to get back to, I guess, the individual municipalities and landowners, particularly if they want to get involved in this project? Or do we know the timing on what this report will be completed for the local tier, lower tier?
Cole?
To you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I think that we want to work with the local tiers together. So it's not us actively working, or working independently. It's working with those local municipalities. Getting the consultant on in the fall is the only timeline we have to really make an accurate assessment of next year's gypsy moth projections, and determine what kind of spraying would need to take place, if any, or how that's going to be worked out. But we have seen programs like that be assessed in the fall and then be undertaken the following year in time to actively manage that gypsy moth population. So I believe that the timelines are sufficient to engage the local municipalities and the local private landowners to ensure that everybody who wants to participate can participate.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Lucely?
Yes, thank you, Warden Weaver. I just want to state that in the Port Franks area, in my 60 years of involvement, I've never seen anything so devastating. And I just wanted to mention to the other county councils, if you haven't seen it, you need to go take a look at it. There's no leaves. There's no needles on the pine trees. There's no shade in our neck of the woods. But I just think it's something that staff in this group should be taking very seriously. Thank you.
Counselor Bradley, did I have seen your hand up?
Just full disclosure, I wasn't in favor of the spraying in Sarnia. However, one of the things that have come out of that, and you and I have discussed it, is that we weren't aware of the Port Franks problem, Port Franks, but he wasn't aware of what we're doing. So I think the approach you're taking is really good. That, when I've heard about devastation in Port Franks, and then we see other issues in the county, that we're not approaching it as single municipalities, that we're at least making decisions as a group. And I'm thinking, there's probably, spraying becomes the option again, that there's probably some good economies working as a collective group. So it sounds contradictory, but I think it's the right direction that we do it as a collective group to deal with it in the future.
Okay. Mayor Arnold. Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden. And just, I think it was about three years ago, Chatham Kent went through essentially the same thing. And I don't think it was quite as severe as what we're seeing here in Lantin County, especially in the northern part. But just wondering what their experience was in year two and year three, or up until now, because they don't seem to have the same issue. But I believe they put in a full-scale first spraying program. And Jason, maybe that's something that, if I scan through you, Mr. Warden, just to double-check and see what happened down there and what their experience has been as well. Because I apologize, it may have been in the report, but I didn't notice.
Go ahead, Mr. Cole.
To you, Mr. Warden. Sure, absolutely. And actually, our involvement to date is, we're really just in the initial stages of reaching out and managing this. So that is something we would expect a consultant to come back and have that information to report back to council on their experience in other communities, not only Chatham Kent. But we're seeing the same sort of things in the Niagara region and other Ontario regional municipalities. So yes, absolutely. We would expect the consultant, when he's brought, he or she is brought on board, to be able to report on that.
Counselor Stark?
Yes. With respect to your comments, Mr. Cole, I think it's wise to incorporate discussions with the city of Sarnia, given that obviously we sprayed, and the results have been rather dramatically good. That being the case, that doesn't mean that we're not going to see revisiting of the gypsy moth in Sarnia. So even given the fact that we've already sprayed this year, don't discount the fact that your consultants should look at the city of Sarnia, not only for past history, but also potentially for a revisiting of the issue within Sarnia again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cole?
So to you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Counselor Stark. Yeah, absolutely. I think we would want any municipalities to participate that can participate. And I want to point out that really, the county's not the lead on this initiative. It's a collective working group. But I can bring that back to the group. And we're really just formulating the group that will be engaging the consultant at this point. And then that consultant will be the one spearheading to get on private landowners, other partners, other public landowners, should the case be needed. So we would want to include the city, absolutely. And any other municipality that, where this is identified as an issue.
Okay. Thank you. That will certainly also include the province with the provincial park and the nature conservatory and conservation authorities. Everybody's, everybody wants to be part of this, or I believe needs to be part of this discussion.
And our First Nation partners as well.
Absolutely. Sorry, no. And I did notice on the drive down here this morning that the trees are turning green. The leaves are putting out a second crop of leaves on the oak trees coming past the pinery. So they will come back. How often they can do that is in question. With that, I have a motion to receive those two reports, and the stage two reopening of the museum and galleries as well. And I have the motion from Counselor Cook and Counselor Lucely. Further questions? All in favor of those reports receiving? That is carried. Thank you. Item number 11 is for information. Motion to receive the December Creative County Committee meeting. Counselor White, seconded by Counselor Bean. Any questions? All in favor of that? That's carried. Thank you. Infrastructure Development Service Division, item A, is the alternative waste disposal diversion report. Motion on that, Counsel Broad? Counsel Miller? Is there a motion with that? That's information? Get to my right page here. Sorry. There's a recommendation there. And we have a motion on the mover of the recommendation. That was Counselor Broad? And who was my seconder? Sorry, I'm getting old. Counselor Miller? Any questions regarding that? Counselor Byrd?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. So through the chairs of staff, thank you for this report, but my March 4th motion had requested staff investigate the feasibility of building a waste-to-energy plant. So I was hoping to see some data on the economic viability, because this not only consists of the cost of the building, but also the great value-added part of all the professional jobs it would create, together with all the additional job opportunities through collaborative partnerships, which of course would give a huge boost to the county's tax base, as well as being a bigger attraction to move into Sarnia-Lampton to work. So although you have offered some comments on waste-to-energy noise, smell, and emissions, technology is so superior now compared to the 1980s. And most importantly, we need to eliminate greenhouse gases and promote a cleaner atmosphere and environment. The emissions from the WTEs are far less than one-third of what is emitted from the current landfill sites. The majority of waste in Lampton County is still finding its way to the landfills, which is what we were trying to get away from, if we truly want to clean up our climate and promote healthier living for everyone. And additionally, landfill sites are using up valuable development land. So I know there's a waste management contract in place until 2035, but waiting another 15 years would not be a good way to go. And as was discussed in our March meeting, it would take at least five to 10 years for the exploration and building as we move to start another huge capital project. So we would need to start sooner rather than later. So staff have raised the point of possibly not having enough waste to suggest the cost of such a large capital project. But as I mentioned in March, Sweden is a perfect example of these, of the huge success. Because even though not having enough waste locally, just like us, they bought their waste additionally from England, France, Germany, and Norway, and still made a profit of more than $100 million each year. I see in the report you have provided information from some municipalities, along with their technology operators. But who did you speak to in the private industry and consultant sector for information on waste-to-energy plants? Maybe Jason could answer that one, please.
To you, Warden. Yes. Yeah, we, as part of this report, we did talk to several different technology owners for waste-to-energy production. And through this report, we are suggesting that the work to actually come back with a feasibility study, to look at the policy environment of the province, to look at the waste market in Ontario, as well as the competing market in Michigan, to look at the employment availability, and to look at the energy market that the electricity would have to be sold back to in order to offset costs. Would, just to do a report of that magnitude, we know of one that was done about 10 years ago in the county of Lampton, for, in, like, for the industry specifically, that ran about $100,000. I was quoted by one of the private consultants that is engaged in one of these technologies. A feasibility study would cost $250,000. It would be, it would be an undertaking, and we can go ahead and proceed with considering that undertaking. But we certainly don't have the money in our waste budget at this time to proceed with that. And we would want direction from council if we are going to take that direction.
Okay. Thank you. Through the chair, are you able to say, Jason, who the private industry companies are that you have dialogued with so far?
I can go back through my telephone records. I spoke to two independent consultants engaged in that field, who reached, one reached out to me, the other one I reached out to. And we've had engagement with two other private industries previous to that that we were relying on, like, previous discussions. But I can provide you with the two individuals, but I don't, at my fingertips, I don't have them right now at this moment.
Well, no, thank you. I would appreciate if you could let us know who they are, because obviously, as councillors, we like to do a lot of research on this too. So just to finish up on this point, so I would just, I would really encourage us all, we need to take one of our most challenging social problems and turn it into a source of new wealth and health for our local economy and environment. So I will not be supporting staff recommendation A, to not pursue further at this time, but I will support staff recommendation B, if it could possibly be slightly modified, to include a date, as the word "future" really scares me, because it's far too non-committal. Thank you.
Okay. The mover and the seconder? We have that for the recommendation. Any other comments on the recommendation? I'm going to call it Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I thought the report was done very well, and I appreciated the work that's been put into this, because that's some of the stuff that I wanted to see when Counselor Byrd had made the motion originally. And just to see some of the experiences from those around us, because we haven't heard from those guys since they really pushed it through the AMO organization a number of years ago, especially the Durham one. I went to a number of presentations in regards to that one. And I just wondering, Jason, when the next update to the county of Lampton Waste Municipal Master Plan would be started? Is that within the next five years? We'd be relooking at it again? Because as it's alluded to in the report, We'd be relooking at it again, because as it's alluded to in the report itself, with the the way that the province is in flux around how they're going to deal with recyclables and everything else, that I know it's, there's a lot of wisdom in waiting until we get some firm direction from those folks. But I'm just wondering when we were due for a review of the of the County of Lampton major or master plan.
Through you, Warren Button. Through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, absolutely. And and in fact, the timing of our of the update to the waste master plan is is a very delicate balance. We want to make decisions on the long-term direction of our of our county waste and what we're doing with our county waste, based on the best information that we have to direct us in the future. We're certainly seeing a provincial policy, provincial policy direction that is taking us in a slightly different direction. It's in flux right now, concentrating heavily on the circular economy. We're also seeing some technologies out there that are very similar to incineration, that while incineration and plasmification right now are are not considered part of the circular economy, they're outside of that, they're outside of that purview. They're not returning materials back to back to their use. There are some, there are some processes that are in the experimental stage and even being looked at potentially locally, that may return those original components of plastics and other components back into the system for use. And we would be very interested to see that, and see if we could work on the benefits of of incorporating that into our future plans as a county. So this is a little bit long-winded, but but I would like to wait as long as as possible, as close to the date, while giving ourselves enough time to act on any recommendations out of a waste master plan, potentially after the next provincial election, to get some some firmer direction on where the province is going to go and where that's going to happen, but not too late as so that we can't actively build on that. So within the next five years is a very accurate timeline to initiate that kind of study, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions? I have the motion on the floor, which is the recommendation in the minutes. I'm going to call the question, all in favor of that recommendation? Opposed? That motion is carried. Item B is the blue box transition to producer responsibility. There was a recommendation there that was there to make sure it ensures municipalities under 5,000 continue to be part of that program. So that was brought forward, moved by Counselor Rumboutz, that recommendation, seconded by Counselor Hand. Any questions, comments regarding that? Counselor Arnold?
Thank you very much, Warden. I have a major concern with the direction of this country as a whole in North America. When you look at the world stage and what's gone on with plastic recycling, a lot of it is ending up coming from North America, going to other countries, and taking it for the cash, and then dumping it into the ocean. And I really struggle. And I think that's why when Counselor Bird brought up this around the incineration, the plasmification, all that stuff, that I was very happy to help support that, and still do. But when I look at what's going on, we're actually paying people to take our plastic, so-called recycling. Everybody has a feel-good moment, and they get it. They take out the easy stuff to to reprocess and dump the rest out into the ocean? Like, how dumb is that? And I think I'm hoping that this legislation not only looks after those under 5,000, but they look to how they're the responsibility back to the initial producer to ensure that this stuff is not being just sent somewhere else and become another problem for another area.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Cole?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I I just want to assure Counselor Arnold that that's a message that, as part of the working group with the province, and 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 just, you know, respecting that their process isn't complete, and they they haven't drafted their legislation yet. But it's it's a very, it's been a very large concern of the province to address in their revamping of the system. And one of the measures that's been proposed as part of those discussions is is to not use targets that are collected, but use targets that are actively recycled. So it's it's material use, returning to the system, not material collected as the target, which which certainly helps to address that concern. And and I think all of our municipalities are pleased to see that.
Okay. Thank you. Thumbs up. Counselor Rumboutz, Counselor Stark, Counselor Bird?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm wondering if we had put in a delegation at the AMO conference to address this issue as a county? Is was that considered, or?
Cole?
Through you, Mr. Warden, yes. So we have requested a delegation at the AMO conference. I I will also say, last week, at our most recent joint working group meeting with the province, we heard a little bit of backpedaling on on the the instigating wording that that brought this motion forward from both us and and AMO itself. So we're hopeful that by continuing with this this type of language to the province, that they will stay stay strong in the in the face of the producers and make sure that our our smaller municipalities are serviced just as well as the larger ones.
Thank you.
You, Counselor Stark?
Yes, Mr. Cole, this is a follow-up to the previous topic on waste disposal, but also ties to the blue box concept as well. And this is in furtherance of Counselor Arnold's and Counselor Bird's position. You indicated that there was going to be a 200, up to a $250,000 price tag associated with any study that was done. Is there any planned reserve or planned allocation, whether it be over the course of the next five years, $50,000 a year, to ensure that we have funds available for that kind of a study? Because from my perspective and and what Counselor Bird had been talking about, this is an important topic that needs to be looked at in a in a bigger sense, in an economic sense, that if we need to set aside money, we should be doing it now with the intent of doing a study within the course of the next five years. And I just wondered if any thought had been given to that.
Through you, Mr. Warden. So in fact, no, we do not have a reserve set aside for doing a waste master plan update. I want to be specific that that $100,000 to $250,000 price tag was associated with a feasibility study for an energy-from-waste facility. The that 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 may be incorporated. And and I, in fact, I would very much like to see it incorporated in a waste management update or a master plan update for the county. But I don't want you to conflate those two, that those those, the waste management master plan update with the price tag that was given for the for the incinerator. We we do not have a money set aside. We have not been setting money aside. In fact, the the reserves, that money that was once going to the reserve from the from the revenues from our active landfill sites has has been used to offset operational costs. So considering an option like that would be a very viable option. And and I'd be, that would be a fine way to approach an upcoming waste management master plan update.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bird?
Sorry, can I have the follow-up?
Thank you. Thank you, Warden Weaver. So assuming that the blue box transition to producer responsibility goes ahead, and always considering the financial issue, what reduction in property taxes would this offer?
Since, through you, Mr. Warden, since the blue box programs are currently operated out of the local municipalities, I don't have a number for that. I can tell you that the county's impact would be that if it specifically for this, for the the implications of this report, if the materials that were not collected at our at our smaller local tier municipalities were not included in the blue box system, and if they were to go to, if they were to go to landfill instead, then the county would be bearing that cost. And I, you know, I don't have a projected number. We'd have to, we'd have to see what each of the rates were for the municipalities and consider whether or not they'd be included. I I I I think your local municipalities would be better off to answer the direct impacts from the blue box program reduction.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Stark?
Yes, just following up with Mr. Cole. Could you, or is it appropriate to ask for a report that deals with some kind of a costing analysis or the report that we talked about with respect to waste diversion and and just waste disposal in general?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Through, sure, through the, like, just to include a sort of a cost program to be able to fund a future waste management master plan update, does that sound reasonable?
That's exactly what I'm looking for.
Yes, we can come back with that, this, like, I could try to have one for the next council, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
May maybe, I'm sorry, I'll just clarify that, that would, we would traditionally bring that back to the next committee. Is that acceptable?
It is. Ultimately, it gets back to council at any rate. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? The recommendation is there, it's moved and seconded. Counselor Bradley?
Just on that issue of what was requested, shouldn't there be a motion on on the record? So we have that as part of the record of the motion that Counselor Stark's moving for report? Things can disappear when there's not motions.
Yeah, we can. I will make that as a motion.
Counselor Stark has made that as a motion, that we get a report on costing and building that into the budget for a fight for the review of our master plan. Is that what you're asking for?
That's correct. With a plan to build a reserve.
Yep. Counselor Loosely, you're seconding that motion?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Item C, delegation of approval authority under the Planning Act. There's a report there with a recommendation dealing with that. Is there a mover for that recommendation? Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Deputy Warden Marriott? Any questions? All in favor of that? Opposed? That is Carrie, thank you. Item B, long-term care division compliance order, plan report?
Warden Weaver, just before we get into that, on item B, there was the motion from Counsel, moved by Counselor Rumboutz, seconded by Counselor Hand. I don't think we ultimately voted on it, but I will take the result, unless anybody's got any objections. I'll take the result of the vote by on the motion from Counselor Stark, seconded by Counselor Loosely, to carry that on B.
On B for the blue box transition?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Everyone was in agreement with that, I believe, so, sorry about that. Item B, long-term care division, item A, compliance order, plan report. And there's a recommendation there that additional hours for registered staff being approved effective immediately for MGM, moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor Arnold. Any discussion? Counselor Bird?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. And through the chairs of staff, the the report says that a number of general changes have been implemented to deal with the person-to-person, resident-to-resident abuse in the home. Can you please clarify what those measures are that you've put in place already?
Yes, Warden, thank you for the question. Those general changes are the ones described in the report, such as opening of the secure unit, reviewing admissions, and the staff increase. There's a detailed report that the staff have put together, which includes some documentation, as well as changes to process in the home.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And any other questions regarding that recommendation? All in favor of that motion? That's Carrie, thank you. And we're on to item 13, which is committee minutes, committee AM minutes. I would call on Chair White.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I present to you the minutes of committee AM from June 17, 2020, for council's consideration.
Okay. Item one was the medical officer health update. Infrastructure Development Services, item two, correspondence. Item three, information reports. Item four, regarding county roads in St. Clair Township. Item five, agreement with the village of Point Edward. Item six, regarding the blue box service. Public health, item seven is correspondence. Item eight, information reports. Cultural Services Division, item nine, libraries donations. Item 10, collection management archives. Item 11, 12, and 13 are in camera. Item 14 is adjournment, Chair White?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I move that county council receives and approves the committee AM minutes from June 17, 2020.
Seconded by Counselor Napper. Any other questions? All in favor of those minutes? Thank you. Carrie? We have PM committee meeting minutes, June 17. Chair Rumboutz?
Thank you, Warden. I present the committee PM minutes from June 17 for council's consideration.
The medical officer health update, long-term care division, item one, information reports. Corporate service division, item two is information reports. Finance facilities and court services, item three, information. Social services division, item four was information reports. Item five, six, and seven is in camera. Item eight was adjournment. Chair Rumboutz?
Thank you, Warden. I move that the committee PM minutes of June 17 be approved by county council as read.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? That is Carrie, thank you.
Warden Weaver, I do believe we need a seconder to that motion.
Sorry about that. Counselor Stark did that. And Audit Committee of June 24. I would Deputy Warden Marriott was permitted as chair for this, appointed as chair. So while we'll go through these reports, item one is committee chair, review of the auditors. Item two, regarding the broad letter and the response letter. Item three is the consolidated financial statements. And item four was the adjournment. Would Deputy Warden Marriott move this audit report? Moved by Deputy Warden Marriott. Seconder for that, Counselor Miller. Are there any questions? See no questions, all in favor of this? Seeing no questions, all in favor of this audit report? That is Carrie, thank you. Items tabled from the previous meetings, we have none at this time. No notices of motion that I'm aware of. Other business? Seeing none, notice of bylaws. Oh, sorry, Councillor Napper, my apologies. I'm sorry. You're on mute right now. You're, I can't hear you. Microphone.
How's that?
That's better. My apologies, Councillor Napper. Now I can't hear you.
I'll hold my finger on the thing.
All right.
I was very pleased to see the announcement from the Minister of Transportation. As many of you recall back when we were having trouble with fire trucks spinning out, stuff out in the highway, we had a delegation. Jason Cole was involved in it, and I'm trying to think who the warden was of the day. It might have been you, Bill. We met with the Minister of Transportation, and it was our recommendation that they take the weigh station that, out there and turn it into a rest area. And at that time, we got a 99-page report why it wasn't feasible to do it. But then Bob Bailey, I call reinventing the wheel, but brought it back up. I had a great idea that they should make that area a rest area, and I just got, we got notification that they're doing that. So I applaud them for basically listening to the delegation that went down there, be it six, seven years later.
Thank you. And again, my apologies for missing seeing your hand up. Anyone else, any new business? Now you're under, now you're on mute, Lonnie?
And that's a good idea. That's a good idea.
Okay.
You didn't want to hear what I said, anyway.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, notice of bylaws.
Yes, thank you, Warden Weaver. It's moved by Councillor Rumboutz, seconded by Councillor White. The bylaws 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23 of 2020, circulated, be taken as read first and second time.
Questions? All in favor of those bylaws? Opposed? That is Carrie.
Thank you. It is moved by Councillor White, seconded by Councillor Rumboutz. The bylaws 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 of 2020, circulated, to be taken as read a third and final time.
All in favor of those bylaws? That's Carrie, thank you. And adjournment, someone prepared, Councillor Bean and Councillor Hand, motion to adjourn, and we shall meet again on Wednesday, September the 2nd. We will see how we get along with COVID, whether things open up, we're at stage three, and whether we can possibly meet in our council chambers again. But that will be determined by the Medical Officer Health. I want everyone to stay safe out there. Thank you. Good discussion today. All in favor of adjournment? Carrie? Have a good summer.
Happy summer, everyone.
Have a good summer, everyone.